Todd Palmeter is here. You are the CEO of Great Parks. And Bill Burwick, are you the president of the board for Hamilton County Parks? So we're delighted to have you. I know you've got a presentation and we have folders in front of us with some information.
That's correct.
So, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, commissioners. Yes, in front of you is a packet, a lot of our current park information as well. There is the booklet of our comprehensive master plan, which I will be walking through as part of my presentation. And then I provided booklets to the other members up front who can follow along as well. Before I jump into the presentations, the video, just a couple of items I wanted to call to your attention. We did host our two largest events this summer. So the Kids Outdoor Adventure Expo was on July 12th. That is a great event that used to be down at Paddle Fest and was part of a bigger event down there. And then it was a Green Umbrella event, and now it's a Great Parks event, and we hosted it, Wenton Woods. And we had about 4,700 or 4,800 kids and adults descend on Wenton Woods on a beautiful day in July and spend a day learning how to fish and do a lot of outdoor activities. And we absolutely love that event and it continues to grow. The other item we had this summer was our annual Pops concert, which Commissioner Dre House attended. Thank you so much for being there. It was on July 24th, probably the best night we had all summer long. We lucked out, low humidity, 70s. It was a perfect night. It's a beautiful night for the symphony. I did want to let the commissioners know that our annual board tour is coming up this fall, October the 17th. So you will be receiving an invitation, but I just wanted to give you a heads up if you want to make a note on your calendars. We typically start around 10:00 AM. It is an all-day tour, but we can certainly accommodate you if you needed to come or go at any time during the tour. We'd love to have you come out and be a part of that. One award I wanted to bring to your attention, we recently received the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. Keith Faber, the Auditor of State himself, came and presented the award to us. This is an award, they audit over 6,000 public entities in Ohio and only less than 4% received the Distinction Award. We actually have now received it for five straight years. So that's congratulations to our finance team, who does a wonderful job facilitating the annual audit with the state every year. So now I'd like to jump into the presentation. I have a video on the show first. So this video is actually a video we filmed and created for PBS. I'm not sure if you're familiar with a show called Informed. It's a series that Rob Lowe hosts on PBS. And they actually came to us and wanted a conservation-based video for a commercial spot during the Informed series. And this is that commercial, so I'd like to share it with you really quick.
There are few places that are preserved for their natural character, and the great parks of Hamilton County are some of them. But these lush, thriving spaces didn't grow overnight. It has taken years of hard work by dedicated staff and volunteers because conservation is a labor of love and the results are inspiring. The restoration of native species that have been absent for years. Water conservation efforts that are keeping these waters safe to drink and enjoy. Perhaps most important, these efforts are preserving and restoring some of the most endangered ecosystems in North America, our prairies, wetlands, and streams, with the goal that you and your family will enjoy them for generations to come. With 17 parks and four preserves, there's something for everyone to enjoy. Come connect, engage, and explore some of the most scenic and biologically diverse land in the U.S. To learn more about Great Parks of Hamilton County, visit greatparks.org.
Thank you. That was a fantastic opportunity. PBS just honestly called us out of the blue and said they wanted a Midwest conservation-based video. So we aired on five local markets, the nearest to us, so Cincy, Louisville, Indianapolis, Columbus, and Lexington. And then we aired on random national markets. So we really don't know when we showed up, but we did show up all over PBS's affiliations across the United States. So, very proud of that. So I'd like to jump into the presentation. My focus today is going to be on our comprehensive master plan. But before I do, I wanted to just go over a couple of quick facts for the whole room. The Great Parks was established in 1930, so we did celebrate our 89th birthday this year. It was established as a park district by Mayor Seasong Good, who had made a trip to Cleveland, was inspired by the Emerald Necklace in Cleveland, and brought that concept back to Cincinnati. And that's how we got our start. We are a political subdivision. Ohio Vice Code, Section 1545, governs how we operate. 83% of our land is preserved, so our land management policy mandates that we have an 80/20 ratio. We're actually above that at 83/17 at the moment. We are the largest landowner in Hamilton County, and we're the third-largest park district in the state of Ohio. For our revenue, 10-year one-mill replacement levy, we're in our third year of that levy. And we also have basically non-tax earned revenue. It's about a 55%, 45% split of all the park districts in Ohio. We are the least reliant on taxes in terms of our annual budget. This is a map of our offerings. We are now at 17,666 acres. I've been here 16 years, and we've grown almost 5,000 acres in the 16 years I've been here. It's been fantastic. That is 21 parks and nature preserves. One thing I do want to point out to you, and there is a separate map of this, commissioners, in your packet, but I put an arrow on here. If you see where that orange arrow is, this is our newest addition. That is the Great Parks Nature Center at the Summit. That is a new venture that we are in agreement with, with New Prospect Baptist Church in the Rosaline community. We actually physically have a nature center in the facility, and we will be operating an outdoor camp there that we've started work on this fall. It all came out of a Res Community Fund project that launched last August, and we got on board with that, and now we have a facility there. So this is the sign you might see if you're coming down Summit Road or entering the church. The church has been fantastic. Reverend Lynch and the staff have given us a great space in the building. So we now have a nature center there. It's open five days of the week, a lot on the weekends, and we've already hosted several events with the community. We'll do summer camps. We are launching an internship program. So we will hire people from the community to get them out into the parks as park employees, but we'll use this hub as our internship. So I wanted to share that. So let me talk about the comprehensive master plan. As I mentioned, sorry, as I mentioned, we are 89 years old, and believe it or not, this is actually our first comprehensive master plan we've ever completed. We have completed park master plans and individual facility master plans, but never took a comprehensive look of the entire agency from top to bottom. So we did that starting in 2017. We presented it to the board in January of 2019, and it actually was adopted by the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission earlier this year as well. And we're excited about that. Wanted to talk about community engagement. A lot of numbers, and there's even more numbers in the handout that I gave you, but the biggest one I want to point out is the bottom right. Over 2,200 people were engaged. That was either through a statistically valid survey, it was 801 county residents. Everyone else was face-to-face. So a lot of public meetings. We learned a lot during the levy process in 2015, 2016, about how better to get in front of the community that we serve. And we feel we were very successful and had a lot of great interaction with the community. So out of all that interaction, we came up with five goals. I won't read them to you, but I will point out that the first three are very outwardly focused. So conservation, programming is a big part of it, and then creating those experiences in the parks. The last two are more internal-focused, talking about being fiscal, our fiscal health, and then about our operating standards. How do we get to those? So just real quick, there's a few things that I want to point on the plan that we learned. Number one, great, strong public support for the preservation of natural lands. We've noticed, actually, in the past 10 years, it used to be people wanted parkland but more for recreational use of a park. Now people just say, no, just buy and protect it. We don't necessarily even have access to it. It's just important that it's protected. And that came out. You can see that 84% of the people in our survey felt that purchasing just for protection of the environment was a priority to them. Our visitation rate is higher than national average, which is really exciting to us. 89% of the people that we spoke to have visited at least one of our parks in the prior 12 months to the survey, which is a higher-than-national-average number. And it's really good to hear. People are out. Probably no surprise, our three most popular parks are our three largest, Wenton Woods, Sharon Woods, and Miami Whitewater Forest. And we learned a lot by seeing where people visit when they came to do our surveys. A lot of people are seeking more active recreation programs and a lot more events. Cincinnati is a very event-driven community, and we heard from people, they'd like to see us do more of those actually physically in our parks. So we're going to work on that. The active recreation programs, top three priorities were fitness, festivals, and outdoor adventures. Things like climbing, some of these like Tough Mudder runs, and some of these more adventurous-type sports are gaining popularity in Hamilton County. Community members would like more trails. We've heard that for a long time and continue to hear it. And it's not just paved trails, nature trails, fitness trails, mountain biking, horseback trails. 98% of people who responded said they'd like to see some sort of a trail project in our parks. This is one that we are going to work on really hard. It was actually not everything when you get information back. Some of it, you have to take a tough look at yourself. We have a large part of our visitors who drive to reach our parks. So, and that's not good, because we should have better access publicly through whether it's transportation, whether it's through sidewalks and connectivities. And you'll see later in the priorities, that's something we've identified immediately. And then we asked the community, your taxpayers, it's your money, what would you be willing to fund? And new trails was number one, or was it number two? And then facilities, which is interesting, they said updated facilities versus building new, which is great for us because we do have a lot of existing facilities. We like to update. And then establishment of greenways, so linking all these different communities. You know, there's 39 different, you know, political jurisdictions in Hamilton County that operate some type of a park. So we can work with all those different ones, try and connect those through greenways. And then after we took our information from the public, we came up with a series of recommendations based on our goals. So the first one, dealing with conservation, really at the highest level, we're looking to protect, connect, and explore. And the reason we point that out in that area is first, we have to protect it, but connecting the public to it, and then allowing them to explore it. One thing we did learn, we have a lot of natural areas and conservation areas all over Hamilton County, but the public said, they pointed on a map and said, oh, I want to go there, but there's really no way for them to get there. We don't have public access. We don't have parking. We don't have a trail. And that's one of the things that we're going to prioritize is the explore part of the first goal. And then our innovative program. So we have to look at our programs. We do over 3,300 programs a year. And admittedly, we are unhealthy on, when it comes to the programs that need to be shelved and moved on. We, the national percent is around 25%. We're about 40. So we have to learn to kind of let things go and listen to the community of what they want and bring those new programs in and keep them fresh and processed. Creating outstanding experiences, this is probably one of our staff's favorites. So, you know, we love people to come to our parks and tell stories, whether it's a simple story or whether it's a very impactful, life-changing story. We hear all of them. So it's important for us to be able to create that space in our parks for people to come and do that, as well as making the access to those spaces equitable. So socio-economic accessibility, again, not just accessible by a car. We want to make sure there's multiple ways to get into the parks and into these spaces. Our fourth goal on advancing fiscal health, what I'd like to focus on here is the partnerships. I just mentioned a huge one, you know, with New Prospect Baptist Church. It's a great way for us to get into a community that we don't serve, where there's already an existing facility. And it's a great opportunity, and it's a footprint that we want to kind of repeat in the city of Cincinnati. I also just would like to note, I went and met with Elizabeth Pierce, excuse me, who's the president and CEO at the Museum Center. And Elizabeth and I spent a couple hours together, just talking about, there's so many areas that the Museum Center and the parks, we co-program or we do the same program, but they're all inside and we're all outside. And we're finding ways that we can easily connect the two facilities by going to the Museum Center and looking at dinosaur exhibit, then bringing you to Sharon Woods and actually show you where those fossils exist in nature. Things like that that we want to do going forward. And then our last goal, operating with high standards of excellence. So a lot of internal focus here. We have, we always are looking at our organizational structure for efficiencies. We have a diversity-inclusion team who's very focused on hiring, recruiting, and also training our staff to be more reflective of the communities that we serve. And that's very important to us, and that that team continues to work on initiatives on a regular basis. So what that did is it created for us eight priorities. We had 133 recommendations in the plan, and that's in a 96-page document that really no one's going to want to read, but it's a back-of-house document for the staff. But out of that, I just want to quickly go over our top eight priorities. Build more trails, which we talked about. I think the commissioners are familiar with. You know, we're extending the Miami Scenic Trail across the Beauchamp Bridge into Cincinnati. So that's a very important project with ODOT, the city, and Great Parks. Add more programming and events for diverse audiences. I've talked about having that reach and being in different communities. Getting access to those conservation areas is important to us. A blueway system. So this is something new that the consultant, a term they used. So really, they're also called water trails, but a blueway system is a bigger picture in that. So it's first conserving those riparian corridors that Southwest Ohio is so known for. Protect those first. And then once we get them protected, let the public get into those waterways, whether it's through a trail system, whether it's floating on a tube, a kayak, a canoe. Stand-up paddle boarding has gained a lot of popularity. And teach them something when they're along the way. So the blueway is preserving it. Talk about habitat. What kind of wildlife, flora, fauna are they going to see? That's what a blueway system is, and that's a big part of what we're doing going forward. Our focus on partnerships, already mentioned, that's a, we've had some really new ones kind of blossom here recently. Building ecological resiliency. So that kind of goes with, there's a lot of things happening in Cincinnati. The landslides is a really good example. It's not just chance that we happen to have all these landslides. Things are changing with our soils, with our climate. More rain in Southwest Ohio is very conducive to landslides. When that happens, we're seeing it all over the county. We see it in the parks. And those kind of things that we need to stay ahead of versus just reacting to them when they happen. So that's an area that we're focusing on as well. Expanding access for all users. So we have to have, you know, better trail systems, better accessibility to our facilities and all our different parks. And then finally, it's planned for the future of every park. And the way we're doing that is, as soon as we wrap this plan up, in July of this year, we kicked off what we're calling our Park and Facilities Master Plan. So this is comprehensive. This is probably, you know, 30,000 feet. Look, now we're getting into every individual park. So we're working west to east. We are going to be having public input for all of our parks. We're actually going to get into the park and say, okay, within this park, take Miami Whitewater, for instance, our largest park, you know, what would the public want to see there? Would they want to see an expansion of trails, expansion of campground, expansion of the harbor? We will be inviting people in to give us that input and feedback and moving, like I said, east to west over the next two years. So our goal will be to finish that in the spring of 2021. And we would like to come back and present that with the commissioners would like to have us. So that's all I have. I apologize if I went too fast, but I want to be respectful of your time. Do you have any questions for myself or for Mr. Burwinkle today?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you so much for being here. It's really informative to see what you're doing, and I'm delighted to see the results of the master plan and the strategic plan. I just have one question. I used to be on the board of the Cincinnati Recreation Commission, and we partnered with Great Parks for some overnight, I think it was overnight programming for the kids that we served on the facilities that you have, because we didn't have the land and you guys didn't have the kids. And so it was this great partnership. And I note that you are doing the partnership with Damon Lynch's church, which is in the city. And so I'm just wondering, because a lot of the work that you do is outside the city of Cincinnati, obviously, because it's Great Parks in Hamilton County. But I'm wondering what the relationships are like with Cincinnati Parks and Cincinnati Recreation? And is, did anything show up in the strategic plan related to that?
Definitely. So first, I'll tell you that Wade and I, Wade Walcott from the Park Board, and Daniel Betts and I talk and meet regularly to stay focused on areas of working together. So two things. We currently lease Arm Leader Park, which is a city park, and Fernbank Park, which is in Sailor Park. Those are both Cincinnati property, but we lease them and we maintain them. We've been doing that since 2003. We just signed an extension on both those leases. So that's one huge partnership area. Fernbank is solely the Park Board. Arm Leader is a mix with CRC and Great Parks. So that's one area. And Daniel and I have talked a lot about, they want to get involved at the internship program for nature center at the Summit. So we're going to look at combining with some of what they do in recruiting and getting people into like more of a park and rec environment in terms of a career potentially. So Daniel and I have met to talk about that because he has rec centers, not in Rosaline, but in nearby communities, that we could probably join together and combine some of our programming. So we've talked about a lot of areas. We still do overnight camps at Adventure Outpost in Wenton Woods. We work with the Outdoor Adventure Club, and we do a weekend event every year where we have 60 or 70 kids come out who are paid for through a scholarship that we, scholarship funds we receive through our philanthropic partner.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Commissioner Summer Odumas.
Thank you, Madam President. Your report is just so impressive, along with your information that you gave us. I just, parks, I just love parks. So I'm part of that 55% at Wenton Woods, because I make a point at least once a week to go to Wenton Woods and just sit and stare at the water. So I've been to other ones, but it's always clean. The greeters, when you come in, they are just awesome. So I told them if I had an opportunity, but I didn't know you guys were coming, they were just awesome. You're not trying to make money off of people. The permits are reasonable. The concession stand is reasonable. So just really enjoy what you're doing, and also that you emphasize transportation and allowing for more people to be able to love what I love about the parks. So I'm just really glad that that's part of your goal also. Let's see, I made a few notes when you were talking. And just inclusion of so many residents to make sure that you include the people that are coming to see what they want. So just keep the great work going. I'm just really impressed. It's always clean. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much. And I will share your comments with our staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Portin.
Thank you very much. Todd, first of all, what a great presentation.
Thank you.
And report. And my thanks to you and all the staff at Hamilton County Great Parks, and also great board. You know, Bill, thank you for the work that you and the other members of the board are doing and the leadership that you're providing. It's tremendous. Just a couple of things, just to pick up on the question that President Drehouse raised concerning partnerships with the city of Cincinnati. There are so many other jurisdictions that have their own park districts or park systems in one respect or another. And as we look at ways to do more shared services and joint programming and things like that, I know a question comes up, because there's always this issue of, well, you know, the city funds its parks, and they are a part of the county, and then we have a county levy that funds parks as well, and the overlap and shared use of resources. But can you elaborate a little bit more on, just in a macro level, of the nature of the relationship that you have with all these other 39 jurisdictions that have their own park systems as well? Because I think that gets overlooked in those conversations in terms of what we're doing and what the mission and the role is of, and I say we, because I'm thinking Hamilton County, but, and what the relationship is of the county park system as a whole to all these other local jurisdictional parks. Because you want to make sure that there's equity in terms of the approach also.
Absolutely. And we, that's a great question, because that's something we've identified in this master plan. And we meet very regularly with a lot of our other constituents. Anderson Township, you know, has their own park district, Anderson Township Park District. And we work on trail projects with them. I can say, like, right now, the city of Sharonville is very active in bringing the Mill Creek up into Sharonville and connecting to Sharon Woods. And we're actually partnering with them to where they receive some funding. They're connecting sidewalks into Sharon Woods. We're going to tie it in with our trail system. But the city of Sharonville is funding that project, but Great Parks is going to receive a benefit from it, being a resident of the city of Sharonville. So there's lots of instances of those around the county. Corrine Township is looking to connect the Great Miami Trail coming down from Butler County. And we've met with Corrine Township staff about, is there land along the East Miami River Road corridor that we could work with them to extend that trail system? So we communicate with a majority of them. Like I mentioned, with the two city agencies, it's ongoing. It's a very regular conversation, pretty much a monthly conversation of making sure that we're finding ways that if we line up in an area, let's find a way to make it efficient for us to partner on it.
Good. Second question.
Yes.
And I know this is important to both President Drehouse, Vice President Summer Odumas, related to connectivity, well, as it is for all of us. And we've got tremendous opportunities through the County Transportation Improvement District as well, and the work there that we are doing in advancing in connection with the Green Umbrella and full-trail connectivity throughout the county. So did your, does your master plan get into this, you know, obviously build more trails? I'm looking to see how that, and the connectivity issue as well. I'm looking to see more, when I get a chance to read this, how that fits into this idea of complete connectivity of trails throughout all of Hamilton County. But can you give just a, you know, a paragraph or two.
Sure.
A broad summary of what Great Parks is doing to further advance that relationship and to be a critical primary partner in full-trail connectivity throughout the county?
Absolutely. I mean, honestly, we see ourselves as a leader, and I think a lot of people look to us in that role. You know, we do have a lot of skilled staff and experience in grant funding, trail design. We have great relationships with a lot of elected officials. So we are involved in really every trail project, whether it goes through a Great Parks property or not, Ohio River East, Ohio River West, Mill Creek. Obviously, the Miami Scenic Trail is more near and dear to us because it goes through a lot of our property. But we, we're connected. We've always had an active role on tri-state trails. Jack was on the executive committee, then I was. We now have another staff person. I actually am part of the Green Umbrella Board now. And one of my focuses is actually to work more with Wade and his office on the trail connectivity. So I could see us helping lead the efforts of bringing more of these trails in towards the city, just because I feel like a lot of areas, like I said, people are looking to us, and we sort of have that expertise. Funding's always a challenge, as you well know. You know, we heavily rely on federal funding through OKI and a lot of state funding through other sources, and have been very fortunate to receive a lot of funds, as well as state capital funding as well. But I'd like to see Great Parks kind of, you know, make our mark more in the city, because we have a lot of connectivity outside, but, you know, connecting more towards the center of Hamilton County.
Terrific. Well, if you'd be willing, I'd love to have you present at an upcoming TID meeting.
Would love to. Love that.
About how we might be able to strengthen that relationship.
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Terrific report and great work at the park system, Great Parks. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Great. All right. Well, thank you so much for being here, and thank you for the information. And we'll look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks for being here, Bill. Appreciate it.
All right.
Oh, Madam President, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Just real quick, you know, there's also the whole issue of county residents pay a, you know, through taxes for this, but then you've got the issue of the stickers and entrance to the parks and that sort of thing. What's the long-range vision and goal on that from a financial equity perspective in terms of, I know if you don't live in the county, you pay a different fee, and that's the thing.
Correct.
But are there other plans in the offing relative to further addressing those issues of fiscal equity between county residents who pay taxes for the park and other visitors from outside of the county that do not?
Yes, definitely. We, we'll continue the in-county, out-of-county, but I will be having conversations with the board. I've only been in this role 90 days. I try to dump everything on them beginning. But I think we will have conversations about if there's a chance going forward that we can somehow change our funding, could we rely less on the MVP, or could it not even be there? Not, we haven't had a chance to look at those scenarios, but it is something that the master plan addresses, and I think we have to take a serious look at it.
Great. I think people will be glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have a second presentation from NAMI, Southwest Ohio. This is related to Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which is the month of September. So Heather Smith and, is Ron, I know Heather's here. Is Ron? Yeah, Ron's here too. So Ron Mosby and Heather Smith are here to make a presentation. And to be clear, you guys were here at our last meeting, but you would have only gotten two minutes. And so I invited them back to a staff meeting so that we could hear the presentation and learn more about the work that you're doing.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Drehouse, President Drehouse. So I am Ron Mosby. I'm the city administrator for the city of North College Hill. And I do appreciate the opportunity to present this to you this afternoon. But I would like to begin with a sobering statistic. In 2017, the leading cause of death among youth in Ohio between the ages of 10 and 14 was death by suicide. So let me repeat that. The leading cause of death among youth ages 10 to 14 in the state of Ohio The leading cause of death among youth ages 10 to 14 in the state of Ohio in 2017 was death by suicide. So that means it wasn't auto accidents, it wasn't drug overdoses, it was simply children who felt that their only solution was to end their life. And so the genesis or the inspiration for this actually came out of Yorkville, Illinois. There was an alderman who happened to contact a member of our council, council member Amber Bailey. And so they put together a resolution that was passed unanimously by the city council. And so this was back in May. That's actually in your package. And the, and so Mayor Maureen Mason also has been very assertive and aggressive in making sure that this awareness is being brought to the, not only the city, but the entire community in the region. So what we've done is we have put together a series of events, public events, that will be taking place throughout the month of September. We will begin with a press conference at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, September the 3rd, to bring, to announce what we will be doing for the four programs throughout the month. There will be two presentations as well during each of the city council sessions. But this is a combined effort. So this is in conjunction with the North College Hill City School District, it is in conjunction with the faith community, St. Paul United Church of Christ is hosting one of the events, as well as our North College Hill Senior Center. So we really did try to bring together all areas, all facets of the community to make people understand, to help them understand that this really is a community effort. In fact, our theme for the month is "It Takes a Community to Save a Life." And so with that, I would like to actually turn this over to Heather, who is with the National Alliance for Mental Illness, and she can give a much better explanation.
Thank you, Ron. And thank you for having us today. This is truly a wonderful opportunity for us to let you know what is going on. So I wanted to actually add a little bit to the statistics, to just continue to show how relevant this is. Because did we know that in 10 years, from 2007 to 2017, that the increase among children, youth who have died by suicide increased by 61.6%? And that the death by, of adults ages 24 to 44 increased by 39%? And older adults increased by 36%? So we are seeing an alarming increase that continues through 18 and through 19. So we were really delighted when the city of North College Hill contacted us and told us about their proclamation, what they had decided to do, and asked us to kind of help partner with that and sort of kind of present what is going to be going on throughout the month. So we find that, as he said, the theme is "It Takes a Community to Save a Life." And what we at NAMI Southwest Ohio realize is this, although Google isn't authoritative necessarily, there are very few cities across the country who have recognized this and have declared and proclaimed Suicide September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. So right there is something very, shows the insight and the understanding and the fact that they are up to date on what is going on in our communities. Then addition to that, I think maybe the most remarkable aspect is the way the city, the schools, the faith community, and businesses have all come together. I will say, I don't know that we often see this kind of collaboration and this really addressing something that is so serious that is not just with school-aged children. This is something that affects people regardless of socioeconomic, ethnicity, sexual orientation. Suicide is a non-discriminatory, actually, outcome that occurs. So for those groups in the city to come together and work together, because we've been in steering committee meetings with all the entities, I've had the opportunity to present in front of the school board of the city of North College Hill. So this is something that we find so remarkable, and we really commend this to other cities in Hamilton County, to consider this kind of collaboration, where you see a lot of, there's no turf in any of this, and that is just remarkable, and a lot can be accomplished through that. So I really want to just take a minute and tell you a little bit more about the things that are going to be going on in the month. The first one we'd like, we would love to invite you and everyone that's here, as well as the entire community, is we're having a citywide event, and it is entitled "Bonding, well, sorry, bonding together for suicide prevention," excuse me. And we are having Dr. Jennifer Wright Berryman. She will be the speaker that night. She is a suicideologist, she is a professor at University of Cincinnati, and she, her whole message is the fact that it takes all of us to save lives. And we don't always understand what role we can play, what role we can play in the private spaces that we're in, the public spaces. And so she is going to talk about demystifying and the myths, just mystifying suicide and kind of debunking the myths that are out there. She's going to talk about evidence-based programs that we know work to help prevent suicide and make awareness really atop mind. And then she's going to talk about how we can develop our own roles and responsibilities that we can each take in preventing death by suicide. So that is going to be on September 12th from 7 to 8. It will be open to the entire area, and it is going to be at the North College Hill High School Performing Arts Center. So we are very excited about that and really hope to have just a really packed center, I guess we'd say, for this event. She is a marvelous presenter and she is so knowledgeable and experienced actually in working in this field. The other things we're going to be doing is we are going to be doing, these are national programs that are NAMI, National Alliance on Mental Illness, national programs, which we have brought to Southwest Ohio. We're going to be doing Ending the Silence for parents and caregivers. So Ending the Silence is actually a program developed for schools, for, in the classroom, as well as there is an option for parents and caregivers, which is what we're going to be doing, and also for teachers and staff. So it helps teach the warning signs of suicide, and it helps give resources, and helps to know what action to take when there is that possibility that someone is aware of. So that's called Ending the Silence, and that is going to be for parents and caregivers. The other, the other program that we're going to be doing, we're going to be doing it actually in two different locations in the city of North College Hill, is also a national program called In Our Own Voice. And In Our Own Voice has two individuals who tell their journey of hope through living with and managing well a mental health condition. What this does is it really changes the face of what it looks like for people who are living with a mental health condition. Because I think we tend to think of individuals like my uncle, who lives with paranoid schizophrenia, who largely untreated his whole life, and if you met him, it wouldn't take you too long to understand that there's some skewed thinking there, right, and poor judgment. But what this does is helps us all understand that mental illness looks like you and like me. We're the one in five. We're the one that in this room, if we statistically count it off by five, one person in every five, would be dealing with something. Could be depression, number one cause of disability in the world and also in our country. Could be anxiety, the most common mental health disorder that there is, eating disorders, ADHD. So understanding that there are people we're living with, working with, socializing with, that are managing well their mental health condition, a chronic medical condition, and are in society and productive. And I think that is a message of hope and also an invitation for people to start talking about it more and reduce the stigma. Stigma does keep people from seeking help, and we know that treatment works and people can and do recover with the right support and the right treatment. So we are delighted to be partnering with the city, with the schools, with the faith community, with businesses in North College Hill, to really put a light and a spotlight on September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I want to thank you for the proclamation that you have put forth in recognizing the month and appreciate all the partnership that we find in the county. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here. Really appreciate you bringing, it's such an important issue, and I don't know that we overlook it, but the statistics are sobering, to say the least. So thank you for bringing it to our attention. We do have a proclamation that very closely mirrors the one from North College Hill. All three of us have signed it, so
Thank you.
With deference from my colleagues, I'm going to go ahead and present it to you and hope that it serves as an example to others to do the same. So here's the proclamation for you. From all three of us, yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
On what you did.
Ron, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah, and our best to your mayor and council.
Thank you for what you do.
Please, yeah.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, you.
Oh, here we go.
Okay. Heather, you got to come back. Oh, not nice. Seemed like it's not. Okay. Thank you. Can I ask you a favor? You noted some things that are happening in September. Would you mind providing an email?
Actually, they are. I apologize. In your folders that I gave you, you have the press release at the beginning, you have my letter to the editor that I drafted, which will be in both the Inquirer and the Cincinnati Herald. It'll be in there this week. And then the last page, I believe, is the calendar of events.
Got it, got it.
The third is the resolution that was passed by our North College Hill City Council.
Okay. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Yes.
Yes, sir.
One quick question. You mentioned the rise, just in the last 10 years, of death by suicide. And actually, if we look even prior to '07, I know numbers have been on the rise. Is there any correlation between the increased use of a variety of behavior mood-altering drugs, narcotics necessarily, but others such as Neurontin, gabapentin, things like that, and feelings of suicidal thoughts and tendencies toward behaviors to either hurt oneself or others?
Right, that's a good question. And there is research that shows that there can be a suicide ideation that can be a symptom of some of these drugs, but we understand that actually that's a very small percentage, very tiny percentage. People, as Ron said, they lose all hope and they want the pain to stop, and that's all they are thinking about. So thank you for that question. That's great.
Thank you. Any other questions for comment?
Madam President, just a question. When you mentioned the September 12th event
Yes.
With Dr. Wright from 7 to 8, and I was wondering if that was a typo because, and the reason why I ask that is that once you open up that window of discussion as it relates to suicide, you're going to have people afterwards that want to talk to somebody, not have any counseling, but just to kind of express or ask questions. So I don't know if, is that the amount of time that she's going to talk or?
Right, and there will be Q and A.
So there, it's actually longer than that time?
That's right.
Okay, good, great.
Right, because you're right. One of the myths, though, is that if we talk about suicide, we will cause a person to maybe carry through their plan, but that's, research has shown that doesn't happen, but you're right. I think people do have a lot of questions.
Right.
And that'll be a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thanks so much for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right. Our next item is a presentation from HCDC. I know Harry Blanton is in the room, related to CRAs. We have a couple of these coming up on agendas in Springfield and Sycamore Townships. And so Harry, I believe you're going to give a bit of an overview on how a CRA works and to help inform our decisions.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Commissioners. I am Harry Blanton with HCDC. For those at home that might not know us, we're the economic development agency for Hamilton County, and we promote economic development. As you said, today, we have two different community reinvestment areas being proposed in two different townships, and we thought it would be good for those at home and in the audience to kind of explain what a CRA is or a community reinvestment area, and then we'll talk more specifically about these two different proposed CRAs. So not to confuse with the federal program, the CRA, the Community Reinvestment Act, in Ohio, that's a banking law, the CRA at the federal level, but in Ohio, a CRA is a program to promote economic development and investment in our communities. So we are allowed as a county government on behalf of townships to abate real property taxes for incremental increases in the value investments that are made in either renovating existing buildings or in new construction. Also, a CRA is a designated area of land, basically an area, not just land, but also including buildings, that are, it's certified by the state of Ohio, once we propose a petition that gives them the information that they need to certify it. And then finally, it's a tool to encourage new investment in areas that local communities would like to see investment. As I stated, townships are not allowed to do this on their own, they need the county to approve it. Municipalities like cities and villages can do this on their own, so townships are required to go through the county. But HCDC works with the township to establish a community reinvestment area, to determine the types of development that they want to encourage, to determine what the maximums and of the abatements will be and the terms, and also to monitor compliance of any agreements that we have and to make sure that the property owners are upkeep, are making sure their properties are kept up. And then CRAs can be, abate residential, retail, office, industrial, all types of different land uses. These are just some examples of CRAs that exist in the county. There's more than this, but we just thought we'd given a sample of some of the CRAs that exist already. There's one in Anderson, around the Anderson Town Center, to encourage a development of a multifamily development they want to see next to the town center. There's one in Springfield Township, it's a much larger area, more for residential. There's one in Sims Township that's more focused on a commercial corridor, but all of these have to include housing, so they all do include housing as well. And then finally, the Northgate Mall, because of a vacancy of about 50%, when this was proposed, they asked us to help try to get some, encourage some investment into that, the Northgate Mall, and it did induce some investment into the mall, if you remember, maybe six or seven years ago. According to the Ohio Revised Code, basically, you have to do enabling legislation at both the township and the county level. The maximums that we can go up to are 100% in real property tax abatement and up to 15 And again, I stress the word "up to," that's the maximums allowed. Individual communities might want to incentivize at a lower level, so I will point it out when we talk about the two different townships. But we can do, whether it's new construction or remodeling of commercial or residential, so those can both be considered. I should point out that in the commercial agreements, we have to negotiate that with them. It's not a given, they have to negotiate that with HDC and the township, and then we bring it to the Commissioners for approval. On the residential side, once we do the enabling legislation and the state approves it, it's somewhat perfunctory, or it's just a process where they apply for it once they do construction. And I just want to stress that commercial, though, is a negotiation, it has to be approved by the Commissioners. So this is kind of the process, and it talks about the three different governmental entities, how they're involved, and then HDC's role along the whole path. So at the community level, at the township level, they will determine the CRA boundaries that they want to include, they determine what types of projects they want to incentivize, the benefits and the terms are determined by them, and obviously approved by the Commissioners. You will be approving all this. And then they pass local legislation and they coordinate with the school district. HDC at that, in that part of the process, works closely with them to do all of this documentation, putting together what we call a petition. There's a petition that the state of Ohio requires, and that's in your packet, and all the information that's part of that. We conduct what's called a housing survey to determine the condition of the housing and the buildings within the CRA. We use a sort of a standard, well-accepted practice called CDU or Condition Desirability and Usefulness, and we basically rank from one to five each of those different aspects. So we'll look at the fascia, the gutters, the sidewalks, the paint, and all these different aspects of a building to determine whether, what kind of shape that they're in. And then finally, we work with the community to do the local legislation and put together the packet. At the county level, we work with you to do the local legislation and put together the petition, and then we present the CRA like we're doing today to you for your consideration. And then finally, we put the packet together and send it to the state for their consideration, and they either certify it or do not certify it. And then finally, yeah, that's what we do. I'm sorry. So granting the CRA abatements, as I pointed out, today what you're doing is you're So, granting the CRA abatements, as I pointed out today, what you're doing is you're just establishing the community reinvestment area. You're not approving a commercial project. We'll talk later about that in Sycamore Township especially. And then, as I said, the abatement agreement must, the agreement and the commercial project must be approved before they can start construction. And so, we're talking about retail, office, industrial. As far as residential, they go forward and they make their improvements, and then they submit an application, basically, to get it on the auditor's record that they did make these improvements. So, I'm just trying to make a differentiation between residential and commercial. It's a big difference. So, for Springfield Township, this is the area that we're talking about. The northern road, you can't really see it, but it's John Gray Road. The western is Hamilton Avenue. Sort of the southern boundary is Kemper, but it kind of jets down a little bit below Kemper. And then on the eastern side is Winton and Mills, and it kind of jets to the east, a little bit past Winton. But this is kind of close to Forest Park, if you're familiar with that area. So, in Springfield Township, this subdivision was built primarily in 1960s and 70s. There's also a 9.2 acre site in the middle of the CRA, or the proposed CRA, that the school district is considering selling to a residential developer for some single-family homes as well. So, that would be new construction. It also would abate individual homeowners within the area to invest or to reinvest and remodel their homes. And there are some houses in there. I drove the area this morning myself, because I wanted to be familiar with it. There's some abandoned houses in there, and there's some houses that definitely need some repair. So, and also, I would say the retail strip on Hamilton Avenue would benefit from some investment as well. And the terms that Springfield Township are proposing are 75 percent, and I will stress again, up to 75 percent. Again, if it goes above 50 percent, it has to be approved by the school district for commercial, and up to 15 years. And then the residential projects, they are proposing 90 percent abatement up to 15 years on both new construction and remodeling. And then Sycamore Township, what's being proposed is an area that is right across from Kenwood Town Center. If, to point out, on the northern part of the property, that's Jewish Hospital, so to orient people on where this is. It's a much smaller area focused on a very specific project that's being proposed. And so, that area was reviewed as well by our staff. Sycamore Township is proposing that this area be redeveloped. Most of the multifamily units in this area were built over 30 years ago, and so they're proposing a CRA to induce this new construction, this new investment into the area. Their proposal for the commercial projects is up to 100 percent, up to 15 years, and again, with school district approval. If they don't get school district approval, it would be only up to 50 percent for 15 years. And then residential projects, for existing homes or existing structures, they would propose a 50 percent abatement for 10 years, and for new construction, 100 percent for 15 years. So, those are the two CRAs. I'm happy to answer any questions. The next steps would be, if you were to propose or to approve this today, we would put together the petition for the state of Ohio. We send it up to the state. They consider the petition. They have 30 days to certify it. If they certify it, it comes back to us, and then we are able to consider individual projects that, like, are being proposed in Sycamore Township.
Madam President?
Yes.
I think, just a quick clarification. I think it's actually on the agenda for Thursday.
This is on the agenda for Thursday, yes.
Yeah, you were saying approved today.
I meant, I'm sorry.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
My bad. Yes, yes.
Okay. So, I just want to be clear about a couple of things. So, this establishes a district, and then there is a second part of the process where we have to actually approve of the project within that geography.
And I would stress again, for commercial, for residential, if the state certifies this, then residential will go forward. But individual commercial projects would have to be approved.
Okay. So, as far as then, the Springfield Township, the residential one, I don't, and maybe I missed it, I don't feel like I've got a lot of background information related to that project. Did that come our way? Do you know?
Are you talking about the new construction?
The Springfield Township CRA?
So, it's in your, you should have a packet. There's two different packets. One is for Springfield Township, and one is for Sycamore Township.
I missed it. Does anybody else have it?
I'm sorry. That will be, that will be an agenda item on Thursday.
On Thursday? All right. Okay.
I bet. I keep forgetting that this is not the day that you're going to be.
Okay. All right. So, that information is part of our packet for Thursday.
Sorry.
Okay. So, and what I'm wondering is, through the process related to that one, is all the history there, by way of any kind of community input, as they've gone through this process?
I don't, I don't know if there was any community input at the Springfield Township one. I mean, I don't.
Okay.
I'd have to, we'd have to ask Springfield Township. One of my staff members, I think, was there, but I don't know if there was any input from the community or not.
So, I guess my question then is, if on Thursday, when we contemplate that one in particular, could we have some information about the background and what happened in the township?
Yes. We'll reach out to Springfield Township to find out.
The Township Administrator, Chris Gilbert, actually called me today. We were not able to connect today, but I believe it was about this project.
Okay.
So, when I, after I communicate with him later on today, I'll forward on that communication , Harry, to you and the board.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah, are there other questions or comments?
Madam President, so Springfield Township, their application for CRA, did they approach you? Is that how that normally works, each entity?
Yes.
So, had there been any thought of maybe Forest Park being a part of the CRA process? Because I'm looking at, well, I'm looking at my street right here, Cedar Creek. And I mean, it's like 100 feet away. Springfield Township is on the opposite side of the street.
Sure.
And then, so like 100 feet away to, go ahead.
Per Ohio law, Forest Park administers their own CRA, the township. I mean, the townships have to go through the county.
Uh-huh.
But Forest Park is allowed to do this on their own, so they don't have to come to the county for approval. They might even have a CRA. I had to find out.
Okay. Okay. And, thank you.
Sure.
Of course, I'd have to abstain if it was related to that. But the other thing is, your agency is the only one that manages the CRA process for the county?
Yes.
Okay. It's always been that way?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, since, I've been there 27 years, so for the last 27 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Portman?
Yeah, I just, clarification about what's going to happen on Thursday. The specific action item that we're looking to take up on Thursday is simply the establishment of a district. We're not acting on individual projects within that district. Is that right, Jeff?
Correct. Correct.
I would stress, commercial projects, definitely.
Commercial projects.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Jeff, do we have anything further on this item that we need to know?
No, nothing further on this item. I think if, as individual projects come forward, commercial projects, excluding residential, which can happen via right, essentially. But as additional commercial projects come forward in the near future on this, we can bring those forward for additional discussion with the board as well.
Thank you.
And I'll just clarify that, if it was like an apartment complex that had many units in it, that would be considered a commercial project. So, we're talking about single-family or two-family type projects that don't have to come before the Commissioners, but large residential projects would.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Madam President, just one more question. Is that the limit, then, Harry, single-family or duplexes?
Basically, unless they s-
A four-family would be considered a commercial project?
It depends on the individual community. Sometimes they'll stress in legislation what's considered commercial versus residential, but generally, two units or less is what we see as residential.
Got you. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is related to the state capital budget. We wanted to get an update as to the impact of the state capital budget on our budget, which I know is coming forward in the beginning of September. So, Jeff, are you presenting the update?
Yeah, so just a brief update. This is really just to begin the process of formally engaging the board on this process. We are, although we have not received formal indication from the state at this point, we are anticipating that there will be a capital grant process that starts this year for allocation of community projects in 2020. Again, we haven't received official word on that, but we do anticipate that coming. If history holds, we will see applications, a call for applications sometime in mid to late October. There will be an application process with applications typically submitted by Thanksgiving here locally. There will then be a vetting and a presentation process for submittal of those applications to the state by the end of the year. With the turnover of governor, we have not heard of any refinement in the local process as of this point. Over the past decade or so, the local process has included vetting by a steering committee inclusive of typically the president of the Board of County Commissioners, the mayor of the city of Cincinnati, the CBC, CRBC, and Chamber, with some other representatives as well. I would anticipate that process remaining in place. At least, we are anticipating that it will. But again, if we hear any changes in that, we'll let the, certainly let the board know. I do have some items for the board as it relates to this. The first is, again, examples of eligible and ineligible projects that we receive, just to pass down, that we typically go by each year. You'll note a couple of things on this, and for folks who, and the board is very familiar with this, but for folks who are seeing this for the first time, sometimes it seems a little bit counterintuitive. But if you look at eligible projects, we have things, I'll call your attention to items like emergency response, infrastructure, and disaster relief, juvenile detention facilities, juvenile correction facilities, and local jail facilities. Last year, you'll recall, or in the last capital bill process, we applied for and received $2.5 million for the build-out of jail and treatment space in the Justice Center. That project is currently ongoing. We'll be updating the board more formally on that at a future staff meeting. But also, things like professional sports facilities, memorials and monuments, treatment centers, community facilities for mental health and developmental disabilities, alcohol and drug abuse treatment facilities. Ineligible projects are on the flip side and include things like facilities for city, county, local governments, operating expenses, county courthouse, city halls, municipal buildings, economic development projects, transit authorities, police and fire stations, county sheriff's office. So, a lot of the time, some of the things that are some of our most driving needs from a capital perspective are not typically eligible for state capital funding. But that being said, we have, we have made great use of the partnership on the state capital grant program in the past. Again, as I mentioned, the Justice Center build-out also, over the past two cycles, a total of $12.5 million for the infrastructure on the riverfront and the banks, which we are now moving forward with Phase, in Phase 3B, to utilize those dollars in advance of the expiration of those funds. So, I call this to your, bring your attention to this, Commissioners, just simply as starting the conversation. Given the timeline, as this begins to kick up, and once it does start, the process moves fairly quickly, that I wanted to engage the board as soon as we could in a dialogue around a focused approach for the county. I'm thinking by mid-September, if I could receive some information back from the board as to desired approaches on this, so that even if we come back at a future staff meeting, maybe on September 17th, and discuss this at a, in a more in-depth level, that'll give us the ability, to the degree there are any, is any planning work, cost estimates have to be done. For instance, with the Justice Center project, we had to have initial architectural renderings done, that type of a thing. So, we just want to make sure we have enough time to get that done. Finally, I will leave you with, I may have already, oh, no, I did not. I'll pass down a list of the projects that were approved in Hamilton County in the last cycle. This is inclusive of the two allocations the county received, but also includes all of the other projects that were received throughout, throughout Hamilton County as well. So, it's just some food for thought, if you will, in addition to the information on eligible and ineligible activities of the state. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but really just wanted to start engaging the board in a dialogue around this, so that we can start targeting our efforts for a focused application come October and November.
Thank you, Jeff. Also, can we check in with the city of Cincinnati and see what they're thinking by way of their priorities? I know sometimes we coordinate with them, sometimes we don't, but I'd be interested to know what their priorities are.
We will absolutely do that, and we'll start putting feelers out to the suburban communities, as well as, as well as some of our other partners, just to get a better feel of the landscape, some of the institutional partners that you see on the list, who typically, traditionally, receive funding. We just want to get a better sense of that as well. So, we'll put those feelers out as well.
Yeah, it might be helpful to get Jim Benedict in the conversation, too, because he generally is very hands-on with the process, and he probably is hearing already some of the ideas of some of the partners for capital funding.
We have started a conversation with Jim, and we actually have Government Strategies representing this here today. I don't know if they have anything additional to add to the process, but we have started the conversation with them, and we'll continue that.
Nothing to add at this moment in time?
No, I would just say that we are operating under the assumption that they're going to do the same timeline. So, we should see an application by the very beginning of November, which will be due by the, before Thanksgiving. So, what Jeff said is correct, that we have all the, identified the project, estimate's ready to go. Obviously, a few weeks' time span is going to be the time to do that information together. That's why we're starting this process.
No, I think it's great to get it started. We did have one year, when I was in the legislature, when we didn't have a capital budget, but I'm hoping that was the anomaly. And we won't see that happen again, because this is, you know, such a huge benefit to local communities by way of economic development and partnership and all this great stuff that the state can do with bondable projects. So, here's hoping that we don't have a repeat of that. So, all right, well, very good. The other thing, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just one other question.
Oh, another question. Yep.
About process, Jeff. You know, we've gone through these several times. And I know that in years past, there have been a large working group put together in an effort to prioritize and develop consensus around what the ask will be, the local ask will be, the thought being, if we're all together on this, we have a much better chance and likelihood of our requests being granted in the, in the capital budget. No guarantee of that, of course, but if we are together, nonetheless, that is the way of thinking. Notwithstanding those efforts in the past, there are always those, then, that who are introducing projects to be discussed, vetted, and hopefully included in the list by that kind of an effort, who nonetheless are maintaining their own independent lobbying effort outside of it, and not infrequently are approved for funding outside of that kind of a process. Any thoughts, this year, as we enter into this again, we're always trying to safeguard against that and protect our interests, but any thoughts on how we might be able to better do that? A, should we engage in our own, or be prepared to engage in our own sort of independent effort outside of, of the group process, if we are not included in things that we would like to have done, and so on? I know the county's always worked in good faith and has honored that process, but we have found ourselves, sadly, sometimes on the outside looking in, because we worked with the process and others didn't, and they did sort of an end, end run around it and got their funding that way.
Yeah, it's a good question, and it's always kind of the, the pros and cons that go with playing as a team player. I know that the process as it exists today, as Commissioner Portman, I know you're aware, was started really as an effort to try to be more focused and deliberative as a community in getting, you know, we'd been hearing stories about how Franklin County and Cuyahoga County were having much more success at the state level than Hamilton County, and trying to find a way so that when we had asks that came forward to Columbus, they were seen as being vetted and community asks, and not just these one-off asks of individuals. So, I think it's been helpful in that regard. I know that, I was talking with Jim Benedict the other day about trying to get some numbers around the percentage of projects that have been approved by this local vetting community that ultimately have gotten approved by, by the state. And I believe the number's pretty high, approaching 90 percent. So, the process as it stands does have a pretty good track record, but maybe a nuanced way of answering your question, I think, as it relates to the county, is that I think way of answering your question, I think, as it relates to the county, is that I think it's always helpful to ensure that individually the legislators have an understanding of what we're doing and what our priorities are, and, you know, never rule anything out, but certainly, at this point in time, I think that starting through the process has served the county fairly well, and I would suggest going that route also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner, some other things? Madam President, just a comment. You were saying you at least wanted a preliminary list by mid-September, and so I would just implore the public, if they can think of any things that maybe are not on this list, because it's very prominent that it says examples.
Correct.
Of projects. So these are only examples, so if there's something for capital funding that you think we may have missed, either by seeing the list or just in your mind, something that needs to be done, we implore you to let us know, so that can possibly be on the list as a possibility.
Do we, to piggyback on that, do we reach out to the other jurisdictions? I mean, there, some of them are, I think, more familiar with this process, because they've gotten money through the state budget, but do we, as a county, reach out and let them know that this process has, you know, expected to start soon, and they should be aware of it?
Yeah, I think, I'm almost, I'm relatively certain that the individual political subdivisions are aware of it separately. They've not typically relied on the county for that, but to your point, as it means of coordinating, I know that we did, oh gosh, it was maybe 10 years ago, the board had asked that a separate, independent process start to help, or to start trying to coordinate some of those asks. So we, as I said earlier, we will certainly reach out and make sure that we have put feelers out as to what communities are thinking in this regard. I would, I believe they're probably aware of it to the same degree we are, but I do think it's always helpful to coordinate and understand what people are thinking in terms of teeing projects up.
Madam President?
Yep.
Just to add to that, the process that we, a little more detail, as we put together the county's ask, we actually reached out to others, the public at large, local jurisdictions, asked them to consider and to submit, so that our ask was not just determined by the board, somewhat in a vacuum, probably not the right phrase, it wasn't totally devoid of input, but we had a more deliberative approach where we reached out and then debated and vetted those projects that were presented to us, whether they should be a part of the county's ask in this process.
Right.
And that's kind of how that worked.
Right, so we wanted to be aware of those projects, and I think we even talked about it, as far as if there was a project, a local project of such regional significance that it would, in fact, also double as the county's ask. I don't know that we ever got to that point with any individual project, but it was at least a possibility that was obtained.
And, Madam President, and of course, that's a great idea, to talk to the legislators in each jurisdiction or the administrators, but kind of opening up and not being in a vacuum, some sort of way that they can get to their constituents in that area, not just administrator or the city manager, so that's my concern.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, we'll look forward to the process. I think I maybe misstated that particular item on the agenda, because I thought you were going to give an update on the state operating budget and its impact on our budget. So I see it says capital, I just missed it.
I'm sorry, well, we can do that next Tuesday.
If you would, yeah, I'm really interested in that, because-
So on that point, that was something the board has asked for. We put together a report on that. We are prepared to discuss that, so we can schedule that for next Tuesday staff meeting or the following Tuesday, whatever.
Yeah, let's do it as a staff meeting, because I think there were a lot of changes in the state budget that will impact our local budget, so I want to make sure that we understand that as we move into our own budget process.
That matter is ready for a report out, though, so that's probably the result of the confusion, so.
There it is, yes, okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, I have nothing else, other than executive sessions. Is there anything else?
I have nothing.
All right, I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G4 to conduct a review negotiations or bargaining sessions concerning employee compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, another executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney concerning imminent litigation, and an executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G2 to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, the sale of property at competitive building, or the sale or other disposition of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit-for-use property.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you.